What's that? Thank you.
Um, were there any-
No, we're live now.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, communications, the only thing I saw communication-wise were advertisements for pipeline safety, very timely. Okay, um, consent agenda, regular meeting minutes for the August 3rd meeting. Any comments, corrections, questions, discussion regarding the minutes? Somebody did a really good job.
Finally.
Yay. Gold star. Okay. General fund. Major streets, local streets, Parks and Recreation Fund, Downtown Development Authority Fund, Sewer Fund, Water Fund, Equipment Fund, Payroll Register Report, Water Report, GPW Monthly Report, Wastewater Treatment Monthly Report. I just wanted to make mention, I'm not an expert with regard to wastewater treatment plants. So Clint has been on the job for 11 months now, and I'm just looking at the steps that he had to take where either something broke down, needed replacement, et cetera. And I'm pretty impressed. I think he's doing a very fine job. There were some concerns initially, how is this going to work out? It might take. It's working out pretty darn well. Good job, Clint. Police report. Okay. OEO Report, Building Permit Report, also construction code authority, and Financial Position Report. Entertainer motion.
Support.
Motion made by President Pro Tem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Steffler, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Objections? Unanimously approved. Now is the time on our agenda for public comment relating to any item on our regular agenda for this evening. Is there any public comment? Okay, moving on to the regular agenda. Item number one, Superior Contracting Invoice. Is this yours, Kim?
Sure.
Whoever.
So, um, obviously this is the water main relocation project. Originally, I had put together a sketch of the pipe with the length and all that, and I had given it to Michigan Pipe and Valve, which would have been our very first quote that we received back in February in the amount that we came and got approval. Once the engineers were involved and they actually came up and created a design for it, that had changed by March. I did not bring that quote to you guys at the time because we were still trying to purchase the easement and we weren't close enough to lock down parts. And then the contractor actually ended up having most of the parts in his inventory, which he brought with when he went to do the project. The only thing that we could not get was a fire hydrant. The fire hydrants are 18 months out. One we ended up dead finding through Michigan Pipe and Valve, they did have it saved for us if we were going to, because originally we were going to buy all the parts from Michigan Pipe and Valve. So, um, so I guess, Kim, this is where you can step in. It was a little bit more money, but then we saved in other areas, but we didn't really purchase anything through Michigan Pipe and Valve other than a fire hydrant.
Right.
Yeah.
So their labor came in a lot lower than the quote, but the material went up. And then the increase in the price between the difference of the fire hydrants also made us go over by 1,270.
Yeah, there was a fire hydrant that was originally quoted for $2,400, and that is the one they did not save for us. So we had to get the, I'm sorry, it was 3,200 or something. So that's where we're over is for the price of the fire hydrant. So we almost didn't put a fire hydrant in, but we needed it to flush, we really needed one in that area, so.
Isn't it true across the board that the cost of materials are going up?
They have been going up. So my original quote was in February, and I think I brought it to you guys in March. Inflation was involved in a lot of that as well. It was going up and, you know, I was, I got approval to purchase the parts, but we had no, we weren't anywhere near locking down the agreement for the easement. So I didn't see the reason to spend $20,000 if we weren't going to get the easement first. So before we ordered anything, we waited till the agreement for the easement was taken care of.
My point is that whatever quotes we may approve, let's say February, March, and we're getting in August, well, that passage of time is going to affect the cost of materials. So that, that just has to be something that we're aware of and taken into account the best we can. So this doesn't appear to be much over. Discussion from council on this issue? Anybody have concerns?
It's sad that it took from February to August to get this done, but in the manner that it was promised, which was on our front row, that everything we could do, that's excavated. Looks like I want to record the plan, I am dead, so that's what it said.
exceeded my expectations. They were done, the crew was done in one day. We had water in the pipe that night and we were testing the next morning. So, and the whole time is what do you want, what do you want, what do you prefer? So I can't, I can't say enough about it, so.
Anything else from council? Entertainer motion.
Yeah, I'm making motion to recruit invoice 23, zero, one, zero, change amount of about $40,561.93 of the material improvement and relocation.
I'll support that.
Motion by President Pro Tem Dyke, supported by Councilmember Kalka, to approve Superior Contracting's invoice as stated on the record. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Objections? Unanimously approved. Regular agenda, item number two, ferric chloride purchase. Clint, is this yours?
So we can only find one supplier for ferric. We use, we make a yearly purchase of ferric. Precipitates the solids in the wastewater and there's only one company that even gave me a good price. I'm not sure why. But it's funny, last year there's a 33% increase in the cost of ferric. And I'm guessing a lot of that's to do with the price of diesel. So normally it would be under five grand, but this one's over. And the quoted pricer, PVS suggested to approve a price higher than the quote since it may have a few hundred gallons, give or take, maybe actually be delivered. Because once they send a tanker out, they deliver everything in it. So the amount is 66, I believe 6640. And I would suggest approving the amount about 10% higher, maybe around $7,200. So. And that's for about 4,000 gallons, which is what we use a year. And that's the only chemical additive we use at the plant. The rest is biological and ultraviolet.
What's your choice? It's needed and this is the only, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we did check with other suppliers and nobody could even get below the higher prices that are in your packet, so.
I asked Evelyn and they said that was right, the pricing. She knows what we get and we'll either order from one or the other depending on, you know, the price, so.
It's a pristine inflation. That's another one. Yep. Okay. Discussion, council? Questions? Complaints? Irritations?
I think the motion that we approve the purchase of ferric chloride from, is it PBS?
Yes.
From PBS, and the amount not to exceed $7,200.
Support. Motion by Councilmember Steffler, supported by Councilmember Alec, to approve the PBS order for ferric chloride in an amount not to exceed $7,200. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Objections? Unanimously approved. Regular agenda, item number three, First Reading of Ordinance 155.3, the Fire Prevention Code Ordinance, which we have discussed, previously discussed in our May 3rd and May 17th meetings, tabled until some particular issues were addressed. I think in particular, Councilmember Feldman and our Friday Chief, and now we're presented with the ordinance. Anybody have any issues with the ordinance, with Ordinance 155.3, which is an amendment essentially of 155.2, which adopts the 2021 International Fire Code and assigns the prior, excuse me, Fire Prevention Official, and sets forth an effective date, which is immediately after publication. So we're to treat this as a first reading. Anybody have issues with the ordinance as drafted? Questions, comments?
Did you have your questions answered? So you're all set? Okay.
Satisfied. Okay. Was that the, no discussion, questions? Entertainer motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Take that back, sorry. Since nobody's raising objections, sounds like we have a consensus, so we can consider this as first reading resolved. Now is the time for public comment for any item not on our agenda for this evening, Mr. Public Comment. This evening. Brian?
County Commissioner Brian Zunder, just want to give you a brief update on some, some county stuff going on. As most of you are aware, probably of the election, we have six new county commissioners as of January 1st. Yeah, thank you. So I'm sure there'll be some, some challenging times ahead. But we're working on setting up some training for, for the new commissioners before, before January, so they can actually hit the ground running. We have lots of projects going on at the county with the, we have a wage study that's been in place, been going on for probably the last four, five months. With the, with the millage that passed for the safety millage, that's, that's going to make that a lot easier to implement. So we're, we're getting the first, first bits of information back regarding the wage study. We should have the rest of it by the end of the month and then come up the plan to put that all in place. We have several parking lots that are being redone, starting probably in the next two weeks. We have park projects that are ongoing and lots of, lots of busyness and we've been fairly short-staffed the past year. So that continues to be a little bit of an issue. Does anybody have any questions?
You'll be the institutional history guy.
I guess I'm a physician.
Yeah, with two years.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, that's amazing, but at least that, that's good. And the wage study, I think, is truly to be appreciated. Over the years, if I recall correctly, Lapeer County employees, I think their wages about fifth worst in the state. I mean, always underpaid, and if you get somebody that's really accomplished, doing well, they leave. They can go elsewhere and make more money. So addressing that issue, I think, is really important. I'm really happy to see that. Certainly could benefit the county if you maintain quality employees, that'll make a difference.
Absolutely. The, the information that we're, that we're getting back, they were severely underpaid.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. And, and the people that I deal with at, I certainly deal with at the courthouse and their treasurer's office and county clerk's office, et cetera, they appear to me to be doing a very good job, professional, competent, and serve a race. Anybody else from council?
Yeah, the sheriff team gave us a, or a presentation, I think, to go down if the safety millage passed, which it did. Part of that was the wage, but there was also several other baseline implementations that were within that plan. I guess my question is, is are some of those baselines already being planned out to be implemented? And how are we going to be assured with six new county commissioners that it's going to be implemented the way it was sold?
Yes, there, there will be, I'm sure the sheriff is working and also Prosecutor Miller working on getting their, their plans in place. But there is some guarantees in there. The, the base that the sheriff's department gets, that can't be cut just because-
Right, but we, in the past, I'm not saying in Lapeer County, but in the past in government itself, we've seen, we're going to do all this, the money's there, and two years later, the money is not there and nothing has happened. I also want to make sure as county commissioners, especially with the new ones coming in, that that's managed so the plans are implemented like they need to be implemented.
I, I, I can only speak as one county commissioner, but, you know, my, my plan would definitely be that, that everything that they promised, that, you know, they deliver on. And I'm sure the other commissioners will, will follow suit, at least in, in that department. So.
Thank you.
One comment to Mr. Trent regarding the, the bottled water. Have you given any, any consideration to getting with the health department and getting, not that they'll give you the list of their seniors that get Meals on Wheels, because they can't give you that information, but you could certainly get a number from them and set those folks aside, some water, so the Meals on Wheels people could deliver it to them. I've seen it done in other communities, seems like, especially that population, the last thing we want them to do is be boiling water, I would think. Something to consider.
I'd take the suggestion, yeah, we'll reach out to them tomorrow and get that input because we've got a nice supply of water that's been delivered today, so.
Okay.
I want to pass one to council in terms of the job the sheriff's doing and the prosecutor. John Miller was elected the prosecutor and since his election to that post, I don't know, 100% improvement in the prosecutor's office over the last prosecutor, who's maybe at the courthouse one day awakened. Miller appears to me to be doing a good job.
He's been there a year and eight months, and I would say that there's a huge turnaround, at least from any of the law enforcement that, that I've talked to, they were pretty discouraged with our last prosecutor. And it seems like, like I say, 100% turnaround from that.
So, you know, it's, it was good when you can report some vast improvement. So it's terrific. Thank you for making your presentation this evening. I hope we can hear from you occasionally, especially with a new commission.
Absolutely.
I'm sure it's going to be exciting.
Out of the new commissioners, did any of the old commissioners just retire out or did they just all lose?
Yes, yes, yeah, there was, there was four that left, so.
I just, you know, with the other elections coming up yet in November, just wondering if it was just the people on the boat saying it's time for new, but if they're retiring out or choose to leave.
There was, there was four that chose to leave. Different reasons, but, you know, two of them definitely for, for health. So.
And Roy, who I think lost, but, but he had health issues. He missed many meetings and, yeah, so have to face up to that.
Yeah, and like I say, it's, it's hard. It's one thing that unfortunately, the way the, the way the elections are for that board, that they're all at the same time. Because when you have that many change in one year, I don't care what board it is, that's tough. So.
Yeah, for example, the council here only generally forward, forward the seven or up for election, any time there is an election, so you don't have that massive change.
Right, but worst case scenario, you'd at least have three that, that were staying. When.
It's what it is, right?
It is.
Yeah.
I'm sure it'll be very interesting the next couple of years.
Buck, thanks, Brad. Anybody else with a public comment? The non-open discussion, discussion engine braking ordinance. So I heard some interesting discussions going on just prior to the meeting. So who wants to start? Oh, the, the first presentation of existing ordinance, what community does that come from, aside from the Bad Ex one? Do we know where it comes from?
It started with a C. It was the two that, Mr. Steffler.
Charlotte and Bad Ex?
Yes.
Charlotte, oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Yeah, so as I mentioned at our last meeting, I wanted to just have a discussion about the prohibition of jake braking, engine braking on M53 or in village limits. And these were a couple of ordinances I had found in just doing a general search online. There was one other one, I don't know if it was included in the links I sent, I can't remember that one. One of the differences in that one is there was sort of an exception for emergency use of an engine brake. And I don't know, Jim, if you had thoughts on that, if you thought that that would be a valuable addition or, or not necessarily.
It's hard to call an emergency at 30 mile an hour, no matter what you're loaded with. I mean, could it happen, I guess? I mean, depending on the driver and what he deems an emergency, I mean, to me, if it's that crucial at 30 mile an hour, you're probably going to hit what you're going to hit. I mean, they're not actual brakes, they just cut your power and exhaust the power through the exhaust, so.
So an emergency use really would be your actual brake.
Slamming on the brakes.
Right.
I mean.
Yeah.
But tankers, flatbeds, they have different scenarios. I can't speak for it, I mean, you have the water, the surge, you know.
I saw we had something here, and Andy, I think you mentioned this in an email back that you weren't sure about signage on MDOT. Did you print, did you print this, or David, did you provide this?
Yeah, we, we checked with MDOT and they referred us to their guidelines, and this is from Table 5 on page 66 of their signage guidelines. And these are examples of specific ordinances that they don't like to see on M53.
So my question is that, like, they don't like to see, so can we, can we do it? And what's the repercussion? Is there a way to get around it? Is there a way to approach MDOT and say, this is a problem brought to us by residents? This is not a watershed area or wetland boundary, you know, this is informing truckers, like, going through our community of something that affects them. So I don't know if, from your conversations with MDOT, if you've had that, I mean, I work in state government, so. I know, I know how it is.
The other one is, is in their prohibited signs, I know there was a thing out for the jake brake signs because jake brake was copyrighted.
Right.
So it doesn't say anything about engine brakes.
Oh, and if you read the sentence above it, it says, these signs are often not designated or site-specific. So if you said engine braking prohibited in village limits, then it's specific in sight.
Specific.
It's not just, we're going to guess wherever it's going to be, right?
Yeah, I don't know, it's a little frustrating because you think about, it's, we, it's a village, you go through a town, there's signs all over the place for any number of things, neon flashing signs, you know, business signs. What's the issue of a sign informing someone driving a truck of an ordinance?
A, a sign that's no bigger than a speed limit sign.
Exactly.
I mean, even coming from the trucking industry, I mean, in town, I agree with the, the no engine brake. I mean, you see it, I'm sure.
Oh, I hear it all day.
Yeah, I mean, and it's, to me, a lot of times you hear that in the middle of the night when there's no traffic, it's that whole, I just want to hear my pipes rumble. No different than me taking off on my motorcycle. Nice and quiet, it's a perfect time to make the pipes sing. You know, I mean, there's times, I'm sure, the gravel trains and stuff use them, you know, but is there a sole reason for it? I'm, even coming from the trucking industry, I've just, I don't see it at 30 mile an hour. And, and it's still a hard one on you guys to enforce. I mean, are you going to hold a recorder out the window? I got you. I mean, a lot of it, I think, is going to fall on you guys and, and it would be warnings and more of a communication stopper, you know.
One thing I was wondering, I guess, from a legal standpoint, is if somebody were, a tractor trailer were to rear-end a vehicle and in court they said, well, if I was permitted to use- In court, they said, well, if I was permitted to use my Jake Brake, I could have stopped. But I seen the sign that said no? No engine braking and I hit the car. I I'm just playing devil's advocate, can't hear.
Right.
That's not your only break, that's the.
That's a good defense. Of course, if he was overloaded, he probably shouldn't have been going thirty.
Faster than they were supposed to.
Yeah, the counter argument would be, well, you were going too fast in the first place. Yeah, and and then? Actually doesn't break anything. You're just shutting down power.
Yeah, it's cutting three cylinders? From going through the motor, it's pushing it through the exhaust. And and there's adjustments for it in a lot of trucks and a lot of trucks don't have. So it, I mean, it's not? That's a? I mean, I've never went and ordered a brand new one, but? And on newer ones that you see them more and more, but it's, there's a selection. You can do one, two or three cylinders.
And then for for the trucker, even if? The trucker ends up walking away from the? Uh, ticket, let's say in court? He's taking time off to do it. It's a pain in the you-know-what and losing money and so? It, it, you know, I've seen many cases where truckers there where they're not happy campers when they get a? A commit, um, a a ticket, um? Uh, a commercial vehicle. So just the fact that they received a ticket? Um, and they had to lose that time? Um, and deal with that inconvenience? Would tend to have a future effect if they knew we ran out tickets for that.
I'm not sure if this would fall under the CSA score because truckers hold a? A a safety score? And? When you get pulled over, whether it's for inspection and everything goes good, you get points. When you get pulled over and everything goes bad, you get points and they kind of outweigh themselves for your insurance? And your carrying ability, so? I mean? If you get pulled over for that, is would this fall into that category? I'm not sure. But? The way I was told, any contact with a law enforcement officer? That is documented? Is CSA points.
Negative.
Well, if it's a good, like a good inspection gives you positive.
Yeah.
So when they start to, it's just a? A cat and mouse game, but if you exceed certain amount of points, they can technically pull your? Commercial driving ability. If you're the owner of the truck, they can pull your authority. I mean, there's? On top of your insurance and it stops you from getting freight because carriers are looking at your safety score.
And if you're an owner operator? It's it's tough business.
It might, I mean? If I have a driver get a seatbelt ticket, I terminate him. Because it's one of the highest, a seatbelt ticket in trucking to me is like a drunk driving ticket in a car. Because it's it's a high standard. You know, seatbelts and and cell phones. I mean, if we can? If we can throw some questions at M dot and? I mean, what happens if we put it up?
Ask for permission.
Is it a legal?
Instead of permission.
Is it a legal question or it's just? M dot's preference? Big difference, right?
Yeah. I mean, and is it just a Jake Brake? Wording or? I mean, it's? In the federal motor carrier book, you look at it and every law can be looked at three different directions depending on who's regular. I mean, I'm definitely not opposed to it, even.
Throw it out there and see what they say.
Big one is, like you said, the truckers are spending money, but on the same side of it, now playing the devil's advocate. If? I as a trucker challenge it, which means the chief or his officer is now going to court. So now the village is also paying? Two. So and I mean, I think in the beginning of it, I mean? Do I think we should just start slamming every trucker with a ticket? No. Because it is a new thing. I mean, but to get the word out? You know, maybe some of the local businesses and stuff in town, we can? Say, hey, we adopted this ordinance and send a letter, you know, to the measles and? And, you know, maybe pull some stuff in over in the factories on the industrial drive. Velasquez, some of the bigger? I mean, to 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 try to? Help it, you know, not to be just the bad guy.
Right, it's not, we're not wanting to penalize people. We just want? Them to recognize that that's a community they're driving through and to keep the peace with our residents.
And then there's an area, what where are you gonna put it? From what zone to what zone? I mean? We have a lot of accidents on that curve with trucks. And I'm sure nine out of ten of them are a speeding thing, not?
Had one a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't wanna make that curve more dangerous either, so? If we start it? You know, south of the light? My personal preference would be to end it? Before the curve. You know, just south of the curve. Now, that's not gonna make the residents there very happy, but? You know, or? Take the caution speed sign down and I know it's a? Truck, you know, a state road, so it'd be another M dot thing. And? For the curve, don't make it a caution speed, make it, this is the speed. You know, change the yellow to a white sign.
And I think that gets to one of my, like, the second part of open discussion, just a? General safety on M fifty-three. Um, I did reach out to them to ask if they have? Um, any planned? Corridor meetings set up. I, when I was Googling, I saw that there was one, I think? As recent as last March, and so I reached out to find out? Is this a regular thing, you know? Something that residents or um, elected officials could participate in and the person I was exchanging emails with said there, she wasn't aware of any? Meetings scheduled, but it, I think it would be good for M dot to hear the concerns of our community, particularly? With safety and that curve? That, you know, the noise, you know, some of the other complaints that we have, like running up the red lights and all of those things, so they hear these concerns from us. Um, and so like then they're sort of forced to respond to them with a plan.
Most of that stuff, though, what they'll wanna do is traffic studies and that will take quite a while. But? Like me and Mr. Bowman have been fighting for years to get a turn lane in front of the smokehouse. And?
Yeah.
Their answer to us is there hasn't been enough fatal accidents there.
Which is a shame.
We just had one.
That's what they always say.
Did we have one earlier this year?
You have to have like four to six.
Wasn't because of turning, but?
Yeah, that's what M dot always says. Not enough fatalities.
I mean, I remember as a kid, it took years to get a stoplight at Dryden Road in fifty-three. It was a blinking yellow one way until they had enough fatalities there.
One at um? They were writing this in the Toronto Parkway across the way and? They said not enough fatalities. We asked.
Which is a shame. A lot of people gotta die to get something changed.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of laws that way, too.
And and another thing that? Kind of? Shocked me was when we were inquiring about the speed limit downtown. Um, because we were getting complaints about speeders and stuff and? And they they also said that if we come out and do a traffic study, we find that people are obeying the speed limit? We could possibly raise it.
That is something that they say.
Yeah.
It sounds like someone who didn't want to do their job, to be honest. I've I've had a week of dealing with my fellow state agencies. And I'm tired of people telling me? I can't do that, or this is gonna be hard, or it's gonna take a long time, like? We just need to do something and let them come here and tell our residents that people, more people have to die in order to change, you know? That's? If that's the answer, then residents should hear that and they should? Make noise about that, as should we, because that's not right.
M dot doesn't give a hoot, unfortunately. I mean, I get your point.
Yes, that's what I'm saying is? Have them come.
That's just a community forum, but the first step would be them answering to us.
I think in all the twenty-seven years I've been on? They showed up once. Mike Hemingway was his name, I think. Worked for M dot and?
Right, we accept that, oh, we can't deal with them. Like, no, we can. We have to deal with them. We will deal with them.
Said so. Okay.
I'm not afraid of the state agency.
They're not paying attention to that?
They're not paying attention to it.
Right.
You have to pause the?
I tell, I tell my daughter the same thing. Wait until both sides are stopped. I don't care if you miss your opportunity, you have to wait again.
Yeah.
Wait until they stop.
If I recall correctly, um, the M fifty-three corridor committee? Had an annual meeting every year? And with no results. They were talking about, you know, um? Going around Elmont, you know, and?
Yeah, yeah.
Byways and all that, that sort of thing. Um, but supposedly they had an annual meeting.
We don't wanna push going around. That'll kill our businesses.
Oh, yeah, no. Yeah, well, when when they tore up fifty-three, remember what? And the businesses almost died? Yeah, because the road was all dirt and there was hardly any? Any um? Business going on downtown. It was? Pretty darn tough. Small business people, I've seen situations like that of party stores, construction. Can put a lot of them out of business.
To do any other signs, is it like a permit thing that we have to apply to do it? Let's just, let's just?
Banner over the, for the pancake breakfast.
Yeah.
Got a permit for that. We have to have, obviously, a permit to put our speed trailers up.
Right, um, but I'm saying like a permit for a permanent sign, I'm sure there's some kind of permit to? To ask to put a permanent sign on it. Let's fill the permit up.
Make them deny it.
Make them deny it on paper.
Going back to the M fifty-three corridor meetings, uh, early in the year, Jamie Lagon? Uh, helped facilitate? Getting those meetings back in operation. I'm not sure how long it had been that that group had not met, but apparently it had been a while. And uh? And uh, the first meeting I attended was up in Goodrich and there was probably thirty to thirty-five people in attendance. And uh, it ranged all the way from people that, uh, you know, are down in McComb? And all the way up, you know, north of Goodrich as well. Uh, and the M dot rep was there and they had one meeting via Zoom. And Jamie has been trying to coordinate another meeting. And because of the M dot reps' schedule? It's like they haven't been able to pin that person down to commit to they will be there in person. Uh, and so it's like, you know, if the M dot rep isn't going to be there, what's the value in having the meeting? So? Uh, there hasn't been a meeting for several months now, but it's not because Jamie isn't trying. It's just because trying to schedule? Uh, you know, a a certain? Time of the year and they were trying to do it like on the fourth Monday of the month, every quarter for this year. And there hasn't been a meeting now for two quarters, so? But, uh, you know, I've made a note, uh, and, you know, we'll follow up and try to get some additional detail on? You know, but, uh, you know, to to Mr. Alex's uh? Concern about, you know, where would we put those signs, I think is critical, uh, if we're gonna have that future dialogue with M dot? And say, we want a permit to put up a sign and the the range within the? Uh, village limits is from point A to point B.
I think as a council and as? Village leadership, we need to come up with five or six valid points of safety that we're concerned with? In the next quarter? Projects, get on the horn to M dot and get them here. I think that's what needs to happen. Because they're not gonna hear? They're not gonna listen to our concerns. They're gonna be listening to ninety thousand people and saying, yeah, 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 and then nothing is done. And if they manage the highway through our town, it's their responsibility to listen to us, not to dodge. But before we do that, we should have a fine and place of what the discussion points are gonna be.
I think it would be helpful, um? Andy, I don't know how you would do this, but? To collect some statistics? On M fifty-three, if you don't already do that as far as like speeding, running the light, you know, those sorts of infractions like in that zone? So we could be saying like? We've stepped up enforcement in this area and this is what we've seen, you know, so we can have some data to back up? What we're? What we're?
Yeah, um? One specific area that we've been doing that obviously is the light at Main and St. Clair. And whenever somebody makes a traffic stop there for a violation, whether it's running a red light or speeding? Um, there's a separate form that have been have them fill, fill out. And I probably gotta stack that big?
Well, and plus the new trailers record that data for you, right? I mean, if they get someone at forty mile an hour, doesn't it? At this time of day?
I believe so, and it also, um, they can tell us how many cars are passing through.
I think that's helpful to have that.
I get you guys are still learning those trailers and what they can and can't do, but? I mean, if it would? Give you the busy times of the day on? You know, hey, this guy, you know, you're getting a hundred during this two-hour stretch that are five or more over. I mean, it would be helpful to you guys to know when to?
Yeah.
Set up and?
Uh, but then again, and I I'm just being the devil's advocate here, M dot's gonna say, show me crashes.
Right, right.
Show me, you know?
It's great. You're doing your job writing all these tickets because you're?
But that is what they go by. That's the data that they use.
So we're on Clemis, right?
Yes.
So? We can, I've got the contact because I went and took the class down in Oakland County for the guy who pulls all that data.
Yeah, yep.
So we could go to them and ask for all of the? Traffic reporting data on this corridor? For whatever time periods we want, right? It does types of accidents, types of speeding? When it occurs, time of day, how many per month, year, week, decade? This guy was an IT guy and he was pulling up all these heat maps of? What happened around Lefir County? For us. So we could ask Oakland County to help with that, too. I could, I could reach out to him if you would like.
Um, what is his name?
Um?
If you just?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
I have his email address, Brian. Okay.
This topic?
It'll be all killed better.
Four days to get DNR to respond to an oil duck last week. I'm the queen of persistence.
So do we? I mean, obviously having Jim and counsel is is? Particularly helpful regarding this topic. And of course, he's able to point out the? Complexities. The the do's and don'ts, the positives and negatives, so? To further consider the matter, we need further communication with M dot? As far as? Whether this is just a a preference on their part? Or?
For the signage, we won't need that for the ordinance. There's nothing that prohibits us from making an ordinance.
Then the ordinance? Only becomes effective if we can post it. Right, I mean?
No, not necessarily.
The truckers are gonna read our?
Effective, yes. I don't think it's fair. Um, but? It doesn't stand in the way of having an ordinance. Can we just staple things to telephone poles?
Like an un- unposted speed limit sign?
Right, flash another sign that's like, fine, let's find. You can put one on your building, Steve.
Sure, no problem.
Have people put them on their front lawn. They're the ones that want this. Warning.
Yeah. Okay.
A lot of businesses downtown complain about how loud it is all day.
When the um? Before they um, redid fifty-three? I mean, the front doors and windows would always rattle when the semis would drive by. The road was all broken up. It's? Much worse than? It's much worse then than it is now, but still? Yeah, absolutely. So are we proposing? Drafting an ordinance? Okay. Need our village attorney to do that or?
Certainly, I'll reach out to Mr. Gildner and I know another attorney that's been involved in a major trucking issue dealing with mining. And uh? I can reach out to that individual to see if he has any? Uh, expertise or suggestions on? Course of action that we might be able to take. Yes, you know, Mr. Fisher?
I think we should just use the guy we normally use first, unless he chooses to say, this isn't my, my area.
Yeah.
Let's not shop new attorneys all of a sudden and change what we've been doing.
Not proposing we change, I'm just saying, I, I have a, a personal connection with Mr. Fisher, and he would give me advice for free, so.
Yeah, you can bounce, you can bounce it off of him. And why don't we bring it back then and see what we, how we can get from there. Can't hurt to get the take of a couple of attorneys that are familiar with this area of law.
The thought that goes through my mind is, has Metamora, you know, checked into this, too, because it's such a major issue in their town, so.
It's existential to them, I think.
Absolutely.
And, and of course, the gravel company never gives up. Every legislative session, they're trying to push it through.
And their big road is twenty-four, and there's, the residents aren't so close to the street. So, I mean.
Yeah. Yep. All right, so this will come back to us and on agenda, all right. Okay, great discussion, and then next, Community Heart and Soul update. Man, you're trying.
Last month, I reported to council that I was planning on approaching the township board, as well as you folks subsequently, for a resolution of support to enter into the Community Heart and Soul project, a program. And that was based on what I felt was very optimistic feedback that we received from people that attended our joint meeting back in May. And I ended up attending the parks board meeting, DDA meetings, as well as, you know, feedback that you folks have provided. And, and I was very optimistic that, you know, we would be able to garner a resolution of support for us to be able to move the ball down the field as far as pursuing the Community Heart and Soul project with, you know, some financial support that the Orton Foundation provides. The commitment that four county community foundations said that they would provide as well, since they had made that similar commitment to Armada as they're moving forward with their program. And the possibility that we could also get some grant monies from MEDC, being a redevelopment-ready community. And that we could basically cover a large percentage of the projected budget costs that the program directors for the state of Michigan and Community Heart and Soul were providing to us earlier in the year. So last Monday, I attended the township board meeting, had some interface with Supervisor Bowman before that meeting, gave him a sample resolution that Community Heart and Soul provided. We ended up tweaking it a little bit based on some concerns that he had. I attended that meeting, and the draft that their clerk has provided to me regarding the discussion on the Community Heart and Soul resolution was a discussion with village manager David Trent concerning our participation in the Heart and Soul program. Township board is not ready to make any commitment at this time. That was a very short and sweet sum, summation of the clerk regarding the minutes. But let me give you a little more detail on what transpired that evening. Basically, there were five elements that I've jotted down here to share with you that I feel were part of their concern. One was the financial commitment. You know, even though we had laid out a plan that with foundation money, that that would cover any budgetary needs for the first year. And it was not necessary for the council or the township board to parlay any monies into this effort until the next fiscal year. So there was plenty of time to evaluate the progress and make that commitment during the next budget cycle. They were not willing to step forward and make that financial commitment at this time. One of the trustees spoke at length regarding whether or not there was any value to their township taxpayers. I walked away after that meeting feeling that this particular individual, and maybe some others on that board, feel that a lot of the master plan and what we might be trying to accomplish with the Community Heart and Soul program is more geared toward the village, and that the township residents would not see the value or get the benefit of an investment of ten thousand dollars as part of the, the match that they would be asked to supply. I responded to that concern with the, the fact that we were pursuing this as a joint effort, because it's a joint master plan, and that I heartily, you know, support the vision of both the village and the township to have a joint master plan. I know that's been discussed with other communities that I've been involved with in the past. And, and then I think the, the fact that you folks have done that, I think, is a, a plus. But, but there seemed to be this, this concern about whether or not the township really sees any benefit to, to the master plan, because it seems like so much is geared toward the downtown businesses, the community park. But, you know, I, I, I said, you know, as we go through this process and we're getting the stories from not only village and township residents, it's like, you know, if I'm a township resident, you know, where, where do I go for my, my restaurants? You know, where, where are the businesses I'd like to support? You know, are they up in Dryden, are they up in Metamora, or are they down in Sterling Heights and Shelby? Or is it right here in our own backyard? You know, those are the kinds of things that we would glean by going through this process. But my response didn't sway that township board that evening. There was a comment that was made that because this is an eighteen-month to two-year process, based on what Community Heart and Soul recommends, that we would not be able to complete this program to have it coincide with the update of the master plan, which is scheduled for 2023. Unfortunately, I wasn't quick enough on my feet to be able to respond and say, the master plan can be updated at any time. So whether it took us eighteen months or three years, we can always go back and have the planning commissions make the recommendations on adding an addendum or modifying portions of the master plan based on whatever we learn through the Community Heart and Soul process. The other comments that they shared were the fact that this is so new to the state of Michigan. We don't have any success stories that we can, you know, look to in the state of Michigan. Frankenmuth was the first community that jumped on board, and then COVID hit. And basically, they're having to do a reboot and start from square one, because some of the people that were involved in their core team to begin with fallen by the wayside, so they're basically starting from square one again. They look at Armada as being a more realistic comparison to see how that process works, based on, you know, rural, you know, village and township, et cetera. But they're, they're taking a little bit of a different path where they're, I can't remember if it's their village council or their township board actually passed a resolution of support back in December. So here we are, we're talking eight months ago. And one of those legislative bodies said, and we're not making any commitment for financial support at this time. So it's not that they wouldn't support the program, it's just that they didn't want to make a financial commitment. Last week, the core team met with the Orton Foundation staff via Zoom, and they found out the following day that they were approved for the ten thousand dollar seed grant. And so they have, they have a follow-up meeting where they actually execute a grant document, and whether or not there's some provision in there, because when you look, when you start digging more into the Orton Foundation guidelines, you know, what, what does it expect? One of the expectations is that there's a financial match from the participating community. So, but there's a way to make support of the project through different means. So what we have heard through the presentations from Bob Donahue and Jerry Detloff and Matt Jenkins that would be part of the, the coach and program directors, is that you need to hire the coach, that's part of the deal. You have to hire the coach that's assigned to your community. But you also, they recommend you hire a project coordinator. Well, there's different ways of assigning a project coordinator. One, you, you hire somebody within the community, and you agree on a set salary. And then that's what, you know, you budget for then. Other communities, if they have the flexibility and the resources, might assign staff within the community to actually perform that function. I remember, I think it was council member Steffler, threw out the question about whether or not that was a role that David Trent could play. Based on that initial question a couple of months ago, I thought, no, that's probably not the, the best course of action to take for a number of reasons. But after what transpired with the township board last week, I'm thinking, you know, maybe strategically, there's a way for us to identify not only myself, but other members of our team who have volunteered and said they want to participate in this process in some way, shape, or form. Can we finagle enough hours between the three of us that we could actually implement this going forward as the village, being the main facilitators of this? And the township gets a, a free ride, if you will, unless we lower the boom on them and say, you know, you're getting some value out of this, you need to step up and help from a financial standpoint, because we're contributing our own staff resources to this project, and we're reducing the cost of the project. So you ought to be able to come up with five or ten thousand dollars to help from a budgetary standpoint. And then because Armada is still in the infancy, you know, just got the green light, got the seed money from Orton that, you know, they basically wanted to take a wait-and-see approach. And that, they're not saying that this isn't a good program, but based on these other concerns I just laid out to you, they feel like, you know, maybe we should just take a wait-and-see attitude and see how they progress. So that's basically what transpired in the discussion of trying to get their support for a resolution. So tonight, I do not have a resolution of support for you, because I wanted to share with you what transpired with the township and to get your initial feedback on how you think we should proceed at this juncture. If it's something that we should table and take a wait-and-see attitude, like the township, or if you want to ponder it for a month or two and see what transpires at Armada, and then, then maybe kickstart this thing. You know, one of the things that I think is a plus compared to our friends in Armada, that took several months for them to actually find the people that were willing to participate, is that we've already got nine people that have raised their hand and say they want to participate. And one of those individuals is sitting in the audience tonight, and he jumped on the bandwagon immediately and said, I've got the time, I've got the desire. I want to be part of the core team. He said, I don't want to be the project coordinator, but I want to be part of this group, because I think it adds value to our community. And so, so, you know, I, Mr. President, I, I share that summation for council to get your feedback and and I'll, I'll just, I'll, I'll, I'll move forward in whatever direction you folks want me to regarding this project. Whether it's put it on hold and put it in neutral, or put it in reverse and back off for a while, or at some point, you folks say, yeah, we think there is value, we should move forward and take the ball and move the ball down the field ourselves and come up with a plan from a budgetary and staffing standpoint to have a successful project.
Township board vote was unanimous, correct?
Yes, it was. It was, they didn't take an official vote, they just said, as their minutes say, that they don't want to participate at this time.
That's somewhat disheartening, but the fact that there are nine volunteers, potentially lined up nine volunteers, is somewhat encouraging. Jim, I need to cut you off.
I, my only comment to it is, and I, I don't, I don't know how to say it, not make it sound like I'm being mean, but I'm just going to say it. Sometimes Mr. Bowman forgets, the village is part of the township. And somebody needs to remind him of that. So when he answers you to the township people, tell him, the township people are in the village also. We pay them taxes, too. And you could, I, I'll say it a hundred times to his face, that it's not his checkbook, it's the people's.
So if we, if we were to move forward at this point in time, there would be a financial commitment on part of the village, correct?
At for at least a year.
And we could bow out in a year if we don't like what we're seeing.
Exactly.
Nice to have buy-in from the township. I think the most disappointing thing about the comments that you relayed to us, David, is the sense that, like you alluded to, the division between the villagers and the township people, where we hear over and over again from residents, they don't see it like that. They're like, why, why do you guys make this distinction when we don't feel like it's one community? We send our kids to the same school, you know, we, we have the same downtown, you know. To like continue that, that feeling of there's a divide between the two groups is silly, when, as you say, we're also township people, you know, so. Yeah, like I, I like the idea of just moving forward, but I really would like to have buy-in from the township. And maybe it's taking a step back and, and us, you know, trying to talk to the township board or residents and take that feedback back to the township board, that they may be incorrect in their assumption, or maybe not. But I like your point, David, is we don't know until we ask the question. You know, how do the, the folks that live outside of our downtown area feel about the community and their investment in the park, or the schools, or, you know, other aspects of the community? And I think that was the most exciting part of it, was to get that feedback and understand more what the whole community sees as important for us.
Good point of focusing is on the village park. And there tends to be perspective in the township. That's yours, I mean, I, I think, I think there's been. I think there's been somebody that said, it's good to park to the village, I don't even really care. And, and my understanding is that plenty of township residents are in the park, they use, they use their park.
See their cars, and you see their cars have dirt on them, you know they.
That's what I, that's what I've been saying for years, Jackie.
You see them and know that they clearly live.
Right.
It's a small community.
Well, yeah, my so-called vision is, has always been that at some point in the future, it should all be one community, one governmental entity. I think we get, get a lot, a lot more done. And but it would, Mr. Alex's position of emphasizing the community, the two communities should be operating as a whole, probably leads us in that direction, we would all be better off. So I mean, I, I have my reservations, talking to township board members will make a whole heck of a lot of difference. But maybe just giving wings to this in village's perspective, it starts going, and maybe they'll want to fly up with us. Hey, I, my inclination would be, especially if you don't have a financial commitment, just go with it at this point.
I see them like, oh, good, we don't have to do anything. I see them like, oh, good. We don't have to do anything. That's what I don't want.
The nice part is over the next couple of years, there's a lot of elections and the people can speak. I mean, the people need to speak up. And that means residents in town need to speak to the township and say, hey, you know, whether it's for this, or whether it's for the parks, or whether it's for helping pave some streets. I mean, it is part of the township.
The, the point of the heart and soul is that it's better for the community and to bring in more citizen sentiments about what you want and need. And we're going in that direction and one body is saying, hmm, we don't care. I think our council does. So I, I just, I, I don't, I understand your perspective, Mindy, that the chances of success would be improved if we had them going with us, but we don't. And it certainly isn't the first time. It's like, so if it looks like something positive and going in that direction, we should seriously consider passing a resolution presented by our manager.
To moving forward with it though, the bad part would be is if nine months down the road, it's not looking favorable. I mean, they're not going to come on board or, you know, on a wait and see, we're not committing nine people to start volunteering to pull the rug off under their feet saying, eh, sorry. If they're not going to be around in nine months, they're not going to be around in nine months whether that board was formed or that volunteers were, I mean.
I, I can say pretty positively that the nine folks that have volunteered and raised their hands are the type of people that are not going to give up and quit.
See, it's a volunteer position.
What I'm saying is life is busy. And if I've got a commitment now and I can make that commitment, then I'll be focused on that commitment. But nine months down the road, another commitment might come along. And while I might be doing that heart and soul thing, but I've got another commitment now.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
And, and we're living in a world that tends to be rather volatile at this point. So nine months down the road, who knows what baby's going to be born? So well, so I mean, I, I'm just, I'm giving my recommendation that we consider passing a resolution at this point. I don't, I just, I don't think there's that, that much to lose. And if it's going in a positive direction, it could lift up the community, village and township. If we just sit back, then, then what? What, what are we waiting for? We're waiting for the township, you're going to come blue in the face because.
I was gonna say, hold your breath.
Yeah, exactly. And I don't see it happening. So from your perspective, Mindy, one, you can't, can't really answer the question, what, what are we, what are we waiting for? But what's the negative in passing the resolution?
There is one.
That's not really one. It's just.
I'll just say, I'll just say this, except for Steve, I've sat through as many heart and soul presentations as there's been. And, and from my perspective, we've had three or four presentations. We've had the big meeting. And if they're not sold now, what are we going to do in the next two months to sell?
Township, yeah, yeah. Right. I think the only thing that could potentially make a difference is if we actually start the program and it appears that it's going forward, it's having some success and it's making a difference, that might sell it. And it's, the present status, they're not getting on board. Yeah, right. There's no impetus there for them to do it. And it's just not the same interest in. I don't know that the village council is a better governmental entity, but they may have a little more concern for the well-being of the community.
Well, here's a thought, like, okay, we have the Heritage Festival coming up. Why couldn't we do a pilot with those volunteers? Because you're gonna have both village and township residents there and get data pulled together and be able to present it to the township and then show them that what the residents think. Here's a poll. Are the volunteers going to want to step up and, and go to an event like that? And really help out and put something together, kind of see what people will do.
It's a good idea. Are you suggesting that we hold back on the resolution till after the Heritage Festival? Pass the resolution now and just try to give it a boost when we have the Heritage Festival?
Right. Get some data, have some, get a tent, have some people that, you know, want to participate, get under there and put something together. Let's see if, what, what do people say? What do the residents think? Do the residents like it? I mean, I think that was the other thing too. We really never really found out like, what are they looking for out of this deal?
But it's what heart and soul is all about.
Right. Right. So why don't we get some of that data and put it together?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, um, are you suggesting that we wait, see how things go at Heritage Festival and wait till after that event before we pass a resolution?
And then we can see for ourselves what, what's the data say?
Right.
Right. And that's the biggest place the residents are going to be this year, besides the Christmas parade.
Something kind of has wings. It's just, just the right here. Okay, well, so that's as much of a positive response I guess we're gonna get at this point, but it's something. It, it didn't go thud.
And I appreciate so much the, the feedback that you folks have provided tonight. I think this suggestion by Councilmember Glasser has a lot of merit. And I think it will help us in coming to that conclusion in October if, you know, if we're ready to adopt a resolution at that point. It's not going to be the end of the world if we have another two months before we adopt a resolution, especially if we're going to take the ball and move forward on our own. And, and the gentleman from Hart and Soul has said, there's nothing wrong with the village being the lone applicant in this process to begin with, so.
As you can communicate to the nine parties who have expressed an interest, what we talked about this evening in that we are interested in going forward. We're inching towards it incrementally, but it still has the potential of being adopted.
Might see really what their commitment is.
Thank you, council.
So good presentation. Okay, so that finishes our agenda for this evening. Anything to bring to council, Manager Trent?
Try to be very brief. As, as we all know, we've been going through this boil water advisory that occurred from Saturday. Can't say enough good things about Mr. Treat and his team and the, the, you know, gigantic effort that they've had to put in the last several days to monitor the pressure on the water tower. Make sure that our residents did have water to begin with. We had to use the backup well for a day to maintain pressure while GLWA was figuring out how to get pressure to the seven dwarfs, if you will, that are still under the boil water advisory. And we've seen some fluctuations still in the last 24 hours with water pressure from GLWA. They've actually mandated to some of the communities that apparently have large irrigation sprinkling systems in their communities that, that needs to cease and stop. So that the water's conserved, if you will, that there's less water being utilized, that they can get a better handle on making sure that the pressure is adequate through the system. But by the same token, our friends at Eagle that were part of the Zoom meeting today have come forward with a lot of new requirements that they're asking all the communities, not just the seven dwarfs, but all 23 communities now have to do additional testing over the next few weeks while the repair is being conducted to make sure that there isn't any detrimental impact to the waters, quality of water that residents are seeing. And the last, we, yesterday, we received two and a half pallets of water that we were initially told that we should just keep in storage. Because the edict that we had been told was that people needed to boil water. And so, because we only had two and a half pallets, which was half of what we were told we were going to receive, that we decided, let's just hold on. Well, once everybody found out how Almont and Emily City were being treated as far as water distribution, or water bottles and so on. Because if you've caught any of the local news, Shelby Township had 24 pallets of water and it was distributed in one hour. You know, that's, you know, people queued up in line. So I, I was initially thinking that it must be based on population, you know, as far as who's getting how much water. Well, after today's Zoom meeting, the phones started working and we received 10 pallets of water today. We might receive upwards of 20 pallets tomorrow.
It's already here. It's in Lapeer.
Is it?
I have to schedule to get it picked up in the morning. It's 30 pallets to split between Emily and us.
So we'll get 15 more pallets tomorrow.
I gotta find a way to haul it.
And, and we have organizations that are contacting us as, as saying, what can we do to help? The Eastern Michigan Food Bank, that's based in Flint, basically said, we can give you whatever you need. If you want a semi-truck load, we'll give you a semi-truck load. We just need time to compile it. So they've, they've committed to five pallets as well that we'll see early next week. I got a phone call today from Grand Rapids where a gentleman who grew up in our town heard about the water boil advisory. And because of his love for the community that he grew up in, he's somehow connected with a ministers association out on the west side of the state in Grand Rapids. They've already raised enough money where they're sending two pallets of water to the congregational church either this week or early next week. They're going to send us two pallets of water next week. And they're going to send a pallet of water to the school district as well. I mean, so, I mean, it's just amazing how people are, you know, wanting to help support not only Almont, but Emily City as well. So. So we're, we're getting the right, the right people to, you know, send us water. And as you've been notified, tomorrow and Thursday, we're going to be distributing water to our residents from 10 to 12 here at the municipal service, at the municipal building.
Logistically, that one of those days that water drop pickup could be like from 5:00 to 6:00 or 5:00 to 6:30. So people that are at work during the day can actually get water.
Well, because this is our first foray, we thought, let's just do 10 to 12 the next two days and reevaluate. We did get some feedback from the county emergency management about looking at modifying the hours. Because they, they indicated that, you know, the larger communities were doing like from 10 to 5 kind of thing. We, we didn't want to make that kind of commitment because yesterday we only had two and a half pallets of water, so.
And I understand we're, I understand we're a short, a short-staffed community, but if one day you did it 10 to 12, the next day you did it 4 to 6.
Right.
Backing up the day at work and actually drinking some water.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, we want to be sensitive to, you know, folks that are working and may not be able to get here during a 10 to 12 timeframe, so.
So we, we, I received a call from Jeff Sadakow, I can't say his last name right. Sadkowski. He's the emergency manager for Lapeer County. He stepped in on Saturday and I've heard from him three to four times a day. And I can't, I can't express enough how much help he has been. He is the one that's getting all this water. And he admitted this morning that there was a mistake with us getting two and a half pallets or, or something. And he's seen that all the other communities were distributing water. And he got us that water. And there's water sitting. The Lapeer County Road Commission has a seat on that committee, so they actually have been trucking water for the last two days to Elmont and Emily. I, so we have 30 pallets that are at the road commission in Lapeer right now, but he, it seems like every night just before I go to lay down, he's calling me, do you need anything? So, I mean, I just want his name to be recognized because he has stepped up. And yesterday he was out here. He met with David and Kim. You know, he rode with the road commission to go get the water. And I just can't say enough good about him, so. And like David did say, the state has stepped in. That's originally how I was notified of the break. Because our SCADA picked up that we weren't getting any flow. And then my phone rang on Saturday. It was the state and he had advised me about the break. So what they are worried about right now is corrosion control. When we start running wells, like Emily City's running wells, Lapeer's running wells. That's what happened to Flint. That's how they washed all the phosphates out of the water. And then the lead from the pipes leached in. We only pumped 145,000 gallons of well water in a 24-hour period into our system. We never lost pressure. We never went below 80 PSI. So there was never an opportunity for contamination to come in, but we did change the water quality. Originally, I thought I was in control of the boil water, but GLWA issued that. And they are, they have said that we are going to be on that for, until that pipe is repaired. We had some pressure problems. It seems like they have those corrected. I've filled the tower up twice. We started right away with chlorine residuals. And I have taken five bacteria samples randomly picked throughout the village. One of them, the water tower, and one of them, the wellhouse, they all came back with zero colonies. But we don't have chlorine throughout the whole system. Email went out today of what they would like us to do. And it kind of looks like we can start moving towards lifting the boil water. There's a process though. They want testing and stuff like that. I wouldn't anticipate it being on as long as their pressure maintains. I, I don't anticipate it being on for as long as that repair is made. It could be off, you know, hopeful thinking as, as early as next week. So we have done everything to a T. I have an emergency response plan. I have to give it to my, my staff stepped in and they just completely took over. Just basically did everything we were trained to do. So we were having problems with their pressure. Their pressure was at 20 and you're not supposed to drop below 20 pounds. Well, our pressure's at 80 all the time. My other step was when the tower, if it was going to be empty, which it, it would have eventually emptied out, was I was just going to take the tower out of service. And we do that when we have the tower painted and all that. But then we would only be running off of their 20 PSI. It would be good quality water, but they, nothing would be coming out of the faucets. So that would have been the backup to the backup plan. I, I don't know. I mean, we're learning about this water distribution to the, to the residents. I think we all know what we would do differently next time. I, I don't know. I, I think that we, everybody, even Kim's staff and David, we've done everything that we could, so.
Summer. Can we be penalized since it's a?
Got it in writing.
Okay.
Because I, so I was, you know, I was monitoring the system. And just freak, all of a sudden their pressure went up. So I filled the tower. And David did bring that up in a Zoom meeting. And they didn't really answer the question. really answer the question, but I kept at it, kept at it because, you know, I'm getting up every hour checking pressure. Then they lost pressure again yesterday. Well, then mysteriously at 5 o'clock this morning, they had pressure. So I'm, if I'm not watching it, you know, I didn't, couldn't turn the pumps on or anything. So I filled it up again and I, I finally, after our Zoom meeting, I brought it up and I was questioning it, you know, through the comments. And then I did email Beren, his name, and he put it in writing. So during this emergency, we will not be penalized.
Oh.
Yep. So it's gonna take time and I'm, I have no issues with Eagle. They have been great, but we are gonna have to flush. There's things we're gonna have to do and we can't really do that until the system is stabilized, which it's stabilized right now and it's the longest it's been stabilized, so. But David is right, bad water's better than no water. We never lost water. Okay? It's not something that I'm proud of or anything, but we did never lose pressure and we didn't, you know, allow any contamination in. So one thing I would want to add, and I just want you guys to ponder this, okay? You know, they're supposed to be bringing another line in off of that 72. We would be in the same situation if they do that. That does not help us. That does not help us.
Redundancy line.
So we really probably need to consider upgrading our backup well or our backup well is not efficient. I mean, it's not, it's, it pumps 120 gallons a minute. Will it keep us from, you know, emptying the tower? Maybe. I mean, it's just something we need to ponder. You know, I don't, I don't, I'm not asking for a half a million dollars to put a new well in. It won't be cheap because they're gonna want you to do corrosion control, you know, chlorine and, and stuff like that. So, but pretty much that's a lot of information in a short amount of time. So we can answer anybody's questions, statements. I mean, I think, I think we did a top-notch job. I, I know the public may not think so, but.
I was gonna take the water rate thing to the next step actually and say...
Just like the residents asking, are we gonna cut their water bill?
I've been asked that by a lot of people.
No. It's gonna cut. They use less water.
We did, we did request a water truck. They have 2,000 gallon trucks with those collapsible containers. And then they found out we were close to Emily City. David, you kind of handled a lot of that. It's in, it ended up going to Emily, is going to Emily City tomorrow, so.
But Almont residents are welcome to go up to.
I don't know, David.
We, we decided that we would not force our residents to travel up there, that they just come here.
I think now we have, I just added 15 more pallets. We got a pretty good sufficient amount to distribute. Kim's been doing the math on that, how much per person and...
Give everybody three gallons of water tomorrow and Thursday, and then we'll reevaluate and see if we can supply more depending on what kind of response we're getting from folks, you know? How bad do they need the water or are they able to boil and be self-sufficient, so? Or just drink it as it is?
I have to say, we are, I've been in, in touch with Jeff and Lapeer, the DPW Jeff and Ed in Emily City. We are working together. We, we are, we were or are in a little bit better shape than, than Emily City. They do not have a booster station to pump. They just run off their pressure. So our system is a little bit slightly different than their systems. Lapeer does not use an elevated tower, even though they have one. The only reason we're as good as we are is because of that booster station and that tower. That tower has 300,000 gallons. We put everybody on a water restriction and I do believe that's how we made it as far as we did because, you know, people pulled together and kind of reserved water, so.
While I was showering, I was thinking of this and it popped in my mind that what a marvel it was that there's this huge water main break and here I am taking a shower like nothing ever happened, like no loss of pressure, nothing. I just think that's astounding and a result of all the significant resources we put into having a good water distribution system. Like you said, like the tower, like the booster station, that, those were not cheap.
Yeah, and I have to also give it to GLWA. I think they've been great through this. They immediately on a Sunday, we had Zoom meetings, you know, I mean, they, I'm very impressed with how they've handled this, you know? I, all's I, me and my staff are gonna pick up, we're gonna learn from this and, you know, we'll improve and I hope it never happens again. But, you know, Eagle was there. We told you, we told you, so. I know, I know. But they, they have been very helpful too. They call me a couple of times a day, you know, when they're just, they're just worried about the corrosion control and the groundwater going in the system, which we didn't get much compared to, you know? I mean, they had, Emily City had to shut down Velasquez, Romeo shut down Ford, you know? I think we put the car wash on a restriction for a half a day or one day or something like that. You know, we made phone calls, I turned the fountain off, you know? We were doing everything that we could considering it was a weekend, you know? Kim's got some ideas that we're gonna, that we'll try differently next time and so.
Throughout the whole weekend too. I mean, Kim was right there with you on them meetings and, I mean, so not only have you guys done a great job in the DPW, you know, thank you, Kim, for, so, once again, stepping up above your, above your seat and doing what you do best.
We, we had a water main break a lo, a while ago. Kim's been here a while now and I'm, me and my staff are going door-to-door notifying people. And Kim goes, well, who's fixing the leak? I goes, well, we'll do that after we notify people. And she goes, no, get out there, fix it, she'll go door-to-door. You know what I mean? For this case, we can't go door-to-door, it was a whole village, you know? But if it's a street or something like that, so that was the day Kim nominated herself to be the public notifier. So my staff, it made sense at the time. My staff starts, you know, working on the repair now, you know? And, I mean, it only makes sense. It just works. It's just the way it is. It's, I don't know how it ended up that way, to be honest with you, but I couldn't do it without her and she knows how to...
And my staff.
Yeah, she knows how to do that, but.
Yeah, guys, appreciate it. Anything else to bring to council? You've said enough, Brian, thank you.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. I am tired.
Would like to still get some sleep.
Kim, anything you want to bring to council?
Well, speaking of public notices, I just wanted people to be aware, there is an alert system out there called Nixol where residents can receive alerts from public safety departments and schools and such. All they have to do is text 888-777 to opt in and they'll receive text message alerts for anything. Like for this break, I got it from Lapeer County. So, and they, actually I asked Jeff Sadkowski to put the water distribution on that system as well, so, and he was more than happy to do it. He's been a great help, so. Just wanted to make sure that that option is out there and available to people because I, a lot of people didn't know about it, so I just wanted everybody to be aware.
Who sends those messages? Does the village have to deliver them, send those messages?
Yeah, yes, but we go through email, is that correct, Andy?
We, we do use Nixol. We've used it a lot in the past. I'm looking at what we can do to upgrade it a little bit.
Is that good? Is that bad? Is that good?
No, that comes right from our office, yeah.
Yep.
And it does it over email and also send a text.
So if we do it over email, will something, some two residents accept? Or do we have policy in place to send alerts like that? Or do we need to look at a policy to do that?
Well, I don't believe any Nixol alerts came from the village. The county did, but.
The alerts that we sent, that when we use it is usually like if we have a bad accident, roads wouldn't be closed for a few hours, we'll send, try to send it out.
Yeah, but we put this out on your thing because my, some of my staff are signed up for it. You guys, yeah, yeah.
Can, can our everyday citizens get into Nixol?
Yes, all they have to do is text, yeah, text. You have to text your zip code to 888-777 and it'll sign you up for any alerts pertaining to your area.
Are we putting anything out there to our citizens recommending that they get on the system?
Let me, let me clarify my statement. So Lapeer County sent out a message, but sometimes we're pre-planning the village, we need to have a village, maybe customize the message while what's going in the village with this thing to village residents. So I guess my question is, is do we have that ability now and do we utilize it? Do we have a policy of when to do it? Or is that something we need to start looking into so we have?
I thought that's what you have, Andy.
It says he has it, but from what I'm, I've heard three different answers to one question I've asked tonight.
Right.
And my basic question is, on Saturday, we had a discussion and we didn't know. So if something like this goes down and our residents need to know the more details of it's going on in Almont and what the, what the effect is in Almont, do we currently have a policy of how and when to send that kind of message out and when do we send it out? Or is that something we need to, one, create or add it to our emergency management plan for the village that, that still needs to be upgraded? That's something we need to look, that's something we need to look into.
For boil water advisor, we have state guidelines we have to, I mean, you have to make a good faith effort, you know, the news media, which GLWA took and all that. But I think you're, with what you're talking, you're trying to set, you want to set this up, right?
Residents can opt in now.
Yeah.
And, no, what you're saying is residents can opt in now to, I forget what the name of it's called.
Nixol.
Lapeer County sent a Nixol message. What I'm saying is, yes, they can opt in, but from a village perspective, are we sending specified, do we have a specified policy to send Nixol messages or another messaging system to get the news out to village residents?
No, we don't have a policy.
That customize the messages to Almont residents? And if we don't, that's something, that's something, that's something we need to start looking into.
Absolutely.
As far as the policy.
Because there's a lot of people in town that don't have the Facebook and don't have...
They've jot it in your notes?
Yep.
Jot it on your notes?
Email.
And put it on your web or the...
So when I've gotten the alerts before, Andy, those weren't coming from the Almont Police Department, that was coming from Lapeer County.
See.
Oh, but you have something before.
I have over the years, yeah, yes.
But we don't have a, but we don't have a specified, we don't have a specified policy to send.
And that was for police issues, like I, I wouldn't know about those.
Pro closures, accidents, like I get those.
Yeah.
Policy in place, we might also want to put that information on the Google website that you can opt in. You will get messages.
That would be a good communication. Putting it on the website.
On the website, do we have a policy in place on how and when we're gonna send them?
Correct. Part of the emergency response policy. We don't need a separate policy, just to add that.
The emergency response policy hasn't been updated in 10 years, so.
It's fun.
The Lapeer County has, Almont has.
Are you sure about that?
Yeah, because I just brought it in copy, an old one, I think it's mine, was installed around...
Your county's fairly new, but yeah, and we discussed...
We adopted that, but we don't have a local, we don't have an updated, we don't have an updated Almont emergency policy.
I have one for the water system, but I don't know about, I thought we just...
That's part of the plan.
I thought we just updated it a couple of years ago.
It's in the review process.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Kim?
Sir?
Wayne?
It's time.
Pete?
Just a question, did paving start this week for McIntosh and June Drive, Kalin subdivision?
Not McIntosh.
I just wondered if they did. I thought that's when they were supposed to start. But with everything else going on, I understand why it didn't, but.
Back a week or two?
Yeah, sort of addition, all my suggestions, I just, you know, polite, though, you guys performed this weekend, was absolutely fantastic, appreciated and professional, and we're lucky to have you have said. We're proud of you, we appreciate this.
I got a couple of things here, not to veer off the water stuff, but I've been compiling a list of things and I might have missed it in a few of the meetings I missed with the funeral and stuff going on, but you bought a printer to print maps or, are we using that? Are we gonna be able to use that or will it not hook into our computers?
At some point, yes.
I just, I don't feel we need to print maps anymore. I think we need a scanner that can get rid of maps and put them in a computer instead of making more big maps. This is my personal thing. And I don't know, here's, it's just another one of my personal things. I have a problem with our village buying stuff off auction sites. We don't buy used, in my opinion, we don't, we're not that community that needs to buy off an auction site to save a few hundred bucks. I just, and we also have the, the manager review coming up. We have forums emailed out, Kim emailed out to us. My personal preference on those forums would be to have the head of the departments review that. I don't, I don't work every day with David. I see him at a meeting, a couple of meetings a month and, I mean, if we pass in the street or there's something's going on where I come into the office, but, I mean, they work with him every day. I think we can get a better review process out of it. I mean, I know they might all cringe, but they don't have to put their names on it. For all some opinion, I mean, you guys work with them every day.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that would get the honest, honest review on them forums.
Something to be said for that.
Homes.
Yeah.
I've already told Brian and Kim, I mean, I've talked to them quite a bit in the last week, keeping tabs on the water stuff and you guys are doing a great job. Keep doing it. Are we still putting a new water heater or new furnace and AC in the wastewater plant? I know it was repaired. I also know it's 30 years old. I also know the repair was only a repair to get it up and running. I mean, the AC is only working because there's a two-by-four holding a flap open. To me, that is not a repair. I mean, I do that at home to get it by until the new can be bought. We budgeted for a new furnace, we budgeted for the new AC. Are we gonna wait until the snow flies and the heat quits to put the new furnace in?
So when we had our air conditioning problem with the air not working, we called the manufacturer who installed it, Goyet, and they knew the system fairly well. We had 13 other contractors come out. I'm not kidding, it's about 13 contractors. Ken's Refriger, everything from Ken's Refrigeration to Orton to Kapala, just anyone we could get ahold of. And Goyet knew the system the best and they found that there was a vent that was shut, which was... Now, as far as the heating, they did braise the coil, which is about a thousand dollar fix, but...
It's gonna break.
Yeah, it is, chances are it's gonna fail, so. I mean, they get, the guy kept spot welding it, he was braising it, and then he turned the pressure on and water sprained right in his face and then he had to shut it down, rebraise it, shut it down, rebraise it, shut it down, and he did that.
Well, I, I mean, I get that. It's great, it's up, it's ready, it will work, but, I mean, we put in for the budget to... we put in for the budget to fix these things that are thirty years old. I think during the summers are the best time to get that furnace replaced.
They're, they're also busy installing units in the summer, so there's some wait times, but, um. It's either the opinion is we have a really good system and leave it. It's industrial, so most people don't wanna touch it. So we either leave it alone or we just gut, or we replace all of it. And that's gonna go upwards to twenty-five thousand. If we're gonna replace all of them and put a split zone system in and get what we want. Um, it's working, everything's working now, but if, if we just go in a straight line and leave it as it is, uh, we're probably gonna need a heater coil, which is like six thousand.
Okay.
But it's, the system's industrial, it's pretty rigid and it's holding up, but as you say, it is thirty years old. And at some point, it's gonna need to be replaced, like that fuel tank, so. That is something we could look at is, um, just, just gutting it.
I just, I mean, it's gonna fail.
At some point it will.
And it won't fail this summer, I can promise you the heat will not fail.
Yeah.
Until the snow flies, until it gets cold.
Yup.
And I'll bet you all winter, the AC won't fail.
Right. Yeah.
We need to do one or the other before it fails. And we need heat and pipes are breaking. We think twenty-five thousand's a lot to put a heater in. It could get really expensive to start freezing stuff up in there. Cause a pump quit in the middle of the night or a boiler quit. I mean, we had planned this through the budget meetings. Let's take the path and spend what money was allocated to the heat. If the AC will hold out for the summer during the winter, let's get the AC taken care of when the AC guys are not busy.
Um, so we only budgeted fifteen thousand for, it's gonna be quite a bit more.
I mean, if it's, if the system's working and the big issue in the system is the coils and they can change the coils for ten thousand and make it so we're not brazing it? And that's gonna make it, if, if, if it's gonna take twenty years off the life of the whole thing? Hey, I, I'm game. I just, I don't think we need to go into the winter with a Band-Aid.
Right.
On something as crucial in that, I mean, that building's worth, if it takes twenty-five grand, it takes twenty-five grand. It's got millions inside there that if it goes bad, it's gonna go ugly quick.
It's gotta be heat controlled for to get accurate lab results.
Right. And then the only other thing I had is, um, I know myself, I would prefer manager reports more consistent than once every two or three weeks. I mean, I just, I don't see them. Whether it be an email, I mean, tonight, we didn't even get one printed here. I know it's been a crazy term coming into this meeting, but.
Yeah, we've, we've discussed this before, a weekly update is, I think, what we've asked for in the past. And it's been most beneficial in keeping us informed.
Clearing that, I'm, I'm good.
Jackie?
I wanted to thank Kim and Brian for all the communications that you guys have been posting. I appreciate that and I liked that it was all factual. And when different neighbors or different people have asked anything, we can give accurate information. And thank you for that, thank you for the good job. And that's it.
Yeah, it's, um, hard to put, put into words, the kind of job that administration has done with regard to the water issue, as good as it could possibly be. So we're, village is very fortunate to have staff like, like you. Um, and appreciate the chief attending tonight and Clint. So we're adjourned.